Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of the 11th of September 2017. As we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silent meditation, please recall this is Patriot Day.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. Will the clerk please read the first item?
Yes, just a reminder that due to the, and I need to change this on the action sheet, due to the Ingenis People's Day holiday, we will not meet on Monday, October 9th. Our public hearing consent agenda are items 1 through 10. If there are any appointees here that wish to come forward.
Do we have any appointees first time here, please? Come forward. And please take the opportunity to introduce yourselves one at a time.
My name's Janice Walker, and I have been appointed to the Community Health Endowment Board.
Welcome.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Eric Buchanan. I am also being nominated for appointment to the Community Health Endowment Board.
Okay. Janice, could you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Well, yes, I can. I've been a resident of Lincoln since 1984. For the past three years since I retired, I have been one of those fortunate people who has a flexible schedule, something that I didn't ever think would happen to me, but it did. Prior to that, I, my career for 37 years was in the court system of Nebraska. And in that capacity, I learned a lot about the effects of poverty and substance abuse and all the things that go with that on our populace, and also learned the importance of strong community services. So that's why I'm interested in the Community Health Endowment.
Okay. Janice, you did a good job. So again, my name is Eric Buchanan. I work with the Buffett Early Childhood Fund. We're located, we're based out of Omaha, Nebraska. But I live in Lincoln, and I've lived here for, since 1980. I have two sons in LPS, both at Lincoln High, Go Links. And I think this appointment fits not only with my professional interests, but also with my personal interests. And so I'm really excited about this and really looking forward to being able to add whatever it is I can add to the board.
Excellent. Do council members have any questions for Eric or Janice? Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Eric North, and I'm on the, or I'm being appointed to the Community Forestry Advisory Board. I'm new to Lincoln. I just moved here, my wife and I moved here in April, but I started a position, new faculty position, at the University of Nebraska-Lincoln, teaching urban forestry, urban and community forestry. I've been involved in Minnesota, which is where we come from, in all sorts of community forestry boards and outreach projects throughout the state and within those communities. And so I'm excited to work in Lincoln and kind of get involved in the community forestry here.
All right. Questions for Eric. Carl?
Yeah, thanks Eric for doing this.
Yeah.
So Lincoln doesn't have the winter Minnesota has. Are you gonna be okay with that?
Yeah, I think I'll survive. Yeah, a little warmer might be nice, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Would anyone else like to testify on these items? Next item, please.
All right, if not, we can act on these items. Item number one, we do have a motion to amend number one.
A move motion to amend number one. Second?
Would you describe that for us?
Yes. It is on page one, lines three, after the words four terms, insert commencing October 1st, 2017, and, end quote.
Okay. Action. Okay, discussion on the amendment. Please call the roll the amendment.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
Now we can vote on all the others together?
Yes.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Next then, also just a reminder to the public, we would request those giving testimony to please clearly state your name and address and to sign in on the sign-in sheet laying on the podium. Next are our public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. I'll call items 11 and 12 together. They're the application of Costco Wholesale, doing business as Costco Wholesale, number 1285, for a Class D liquor license at 1620 Pine Lake Road, as well as the related manager application of Clay Bradshaw.
Good afternoon.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you verily believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Tim O'Neil, 800 Lincoln Square, 121 South 13th Street, and I'm here on behalf of Costco. They're seeking a Class D liquor license. I think we all know a lot about Costco. We're very excited to have them in town, obviously. They're gonna be open October 28th, all construction gods aligned, hopefully. And they'll be employing 200 additional people in Lincoln, so a big employer for a town and a welcome addition, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Tim. Could you introduce our Costco manager to us?
Absolutely. Clay Bradshaw is with us today, and Clay is the general manager of Costco in Lincoln and a new resident to Lincoln.
Tell us where you're coming from, Clay.
I'm actually from Bozeman, Montana. Been there since 2010, and I've moved here July 11th of this year.
Welcome.
Thank you.
To you and your family.
Thank you.
Clay, let me swear you in quick. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as verily believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Other questions for, yeah, just again, welcome. So in Bozeman, were you managing a Costco store in that?
I was the assistant general manager there, yeah.
Okay, great.
Clay's been with Costco for 17 years.
Excellent. Welcome to Lincoln again.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next is item 13, application of ACR Corporation, doing business as Jakes Cigars and Spirits, for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 60 feet by 40 feet at 101 North 14th Street, Suite 1, on September 28th, 29th, and 30th, between the hours of 5:00 p.m. and 11:00 p.m.
Hi, guys. It's good to see everybody again.
No oath on this deal.
Okay.
Okay, well, tell us about your request here.
I'm working with Here Nebraska and Lincoln Calling. It's a three-day festival that basically highlights local music. 14th Street is gonna be the hub. There's gonna be a night market that's gonna be there, and Jakes is gonna have the Beer Liquor Garden that's set up there in the middle of the street. There's also going to be a stage in front of Jakes with, that's gonna highlight local music.
Could you state your name and address for the record?
I'm sorry. Jason Hutchison Hutch, 4221 South 32nd Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68502.
Thank you.
Questions for Hutch?
Yes, so what days of the week is this? It's Thursday, Friday, Saturday. The street's gonna be closed down. The street's gonna be closed from 5:00 to 11:00 p.m., I think is the hours that we're covering. Okay, and does that, is that when the music will be? Yeah, music's gonna be playing, and then local, a lot of the bars and venues are gonna be playing music. So 14th Street's just gonna be the hub that's gonna kind of siphon the people over to the different, different venues. Okay, great, thanks.
Carl needs to know when to wear your plugs to bed.
No, the music outside's gonna be done by 10:00. We're saying 11:00 o'clock to try and get people out of the beer garden. I don't wanna say 10:00 o'clock. People meander if we've been in bars, so.
Okay.
Thanks. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next is item 14, application of SMG Food and Beverage, for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 281 feet by 267 feet at South Point Shopping Mall at 2910 Pine Lake Road on September 30th, between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., and October 1st, between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m.
Good afternoon, I'm Tom Lorenz, general manager at Pinnacle Bank Arena with SMG Lincoln. We get the opportunity this year to work with Lincoln Arts to provide beverages at their Lincoln Art Show, Art Festival Weekend. It's right outside of, right outside of Barnes &amp; Noble and Talbot's. The times are Saturday and Sunday, and the times are 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 on Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 on Sunday. First time we've had the opportunity to do this, we provide the fencing around the outside, so it's six-foot chain link fence all the way around the outside. We'll have staff persons at any entries to make sure that no alcohol comes in or leaves, and we think this is a great opportunity. We love the opportunity to work with Lincoln Arts.
Okay, questions for Tom?
It's a free event, isn't it? Free the public?
I believe so. $1.
$1, okay.
I have an expert.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please. By the way, I was gonna say that if you bring Garth Brooks, you can have anything you want.
Let me ask her some stuff.
It's too late. And the thunder rolled.
Does someone wish to move these items, 11 through 14?
I would move them, items 11, 12, 13, and 14.
Second. Moved by Carl, seconded by Benny. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Next then are our public hearing resolutions. I'll call items 15 through 17 together. They are approving Legends Patio Grill and Bar as a Keno satellite site at 801R Street, approving Gray's Keg Saloon as a Keno satellite site at 104 North 20th Street, and approving Halftime Bar and Grill as a Keno satellite at 200 West P Street.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name's Katrina Coffey. I'm Vice President of Marketing for Big Red Keno. We're located at 11248 John Galt Boulevard, Omaha. I have with me today all of the owners of the three applications you have before you. We'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Carl?
Yeah, who's who? Which, yeah, which?
I'm Karen Gray from Gray's Keg.
Okay.
I'm Michelle Anderson with Halftime.
Michelle Lanzetta with Halftime.
I'm Nick Solby with Legends.
All right, thank you. Okay, please take the opportunity to sign in. Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to testify on these items? All right, next item, please.
All right, next then is item 18, use permit 05004A as an apple, application of large partnership limited to alter the existing layout to show six lots surrounded by an outlawed and to increase the approved square footage from 31,500 to 54,000 square feet of commercial space with waivers, two setbacks, on property generally located at South 14th and Yankee Hill Road.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, members of the council. Danae Calkowski, I'm appearing today on behalf of Large Partnership Limited, the owner of the southeast corner at 14th and Yankee Hill Road. There we go. So we have 14th Street, and you're on the curve coming down from Yankee Hill Road. We have an amendment to the use permit before you today. This original use permit was approved back in 2005, so we're in trying to make some adjustments to make it a little more marketable for today. In essence, we're increasing the square footage from 31,500 to 54,000. What we've done is removed some of the more intense uses. There was a convenience store and a drive-through. Those have been removed and replaced with more general retail uses. So the overall impact is that there's actually less p.m. peak hour trips coming from the site under the revised plan. We are maintaining the side and the rear yard setbacks that were shown in the original plan. We are asking for one waiver, and it's a pretty typical waiver in a commercial development. It'd be for the internal yard or internal setbacks. Basically, we'll be plating the actual buildings as lots, and the parking lot will be one big outlawt. So that's pretty typically done in those situations. The staff recommended approval with conditions. Those conditions were all acceptable. This was on the planning commission consent agenda and approved, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much.
I just have a staff question on this. David Carey could come up?
David Carey with the City Planning Department.
Thanks, David. When the original site permit was put together and approved, the, the commercial space envisioned was 31,000 square feet. Now it's closer to 50,000, 55,000 square feet, and the initial stormwater drainage management plan was for, you know, less intense development. So my question is, is that still adequate, or does any revision need to be made in order to protect the businesses that are built here from stormwater?
Yeah, it's a good question to ask because of the, the change in the plan and the more square footage. One of the conditions that Danae just mentioned that were acceptable to the applicant was 1.14 is to revise the grading and drainage plan to the satisfaction of public works and utilities. That has been done, and that was part of the resubmital of this and the updated plan. So that was important to be done, and it was done as part of the resubmital.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next I'll call item 19, cop plan conformance 17012, approving an amendment to the West O Street redevelopment plan to add the Hoover Pharma Incorporated redevelopment project for the redevelopment of a vacant parcel into an approximately 30,000 square foot research and development complex on property generally bounded by West P Street, the first set of railroad tracks south of West O Street, 9th Street, and northwest slash southwest, north, cannot talk, and northwest slash southwest 70th Street.
Members of the City Council, David Landis, Urban Development Department Director, the applicant in this case, we come to you for hopefully a finding of conformance between this general description of the project I'm about to tell you about and the Westo redevelopment plan and the comprehensive plan. We've been to the planning commission. It was on the consent calendar and was acted unanimously six to nothing. This is where Lincoln has won a recent competition for an international company's expansion in the United States. The last two competitors were North Carolina and Lincoln, Nebraska. You'll find that we'll be back pretty quickly with a redevelopment plan that's moving, redevelopment agreement that's moving relatively quickly, should we get a green light from the city council. This is the projected area. It's on the Westo area. As you can see, it's off Westo, and it's in this area. It includes, the project area includes the roadway up to Westo. It's going to be a 30,000 square foot lab, and this company, Hoover Pharma, that's at this point considering coming here, is in animal nutrition and health. So they will expand their holdings in Lincoln. They have a small office now, but this will be their laboratory. It'll have from six to 10 jobs from about $50,000 to $100,000 a job, and it will be a total investment of about $4.75 million. We do expect to use $500,000 of TIF money to make this work, should the city council find conformance. This is a rough sense of what we're looking in our discussions with them. This is the most recent iteration of the kind of facility that we'll be dealing with them on. It's not the final product because we're not done with redevelopment discussions, although they move apace. And a graphic that you might find of interest, this is the world, you can barely see the line, but this is Europe, and this is Asia, and this is the United States of America. The company, in fact, started in Bulgaria, and these are all either production sites or affiliate sites around the world. I'd be happy to answer any questions, the developers here, if you'd like to ask them questions about their operations. It is not the final redevelopment agreement, it's just whether or not this would be an appropriate amendment to make to our comprehensive plan and our redevelopment plans, I'm sorry, to our redevelopment plan as a soft landing for this project.
Okay, questions for David. Carl?
Could, the developer is here?
Mm-hmm.
Could you introduce that person to us?
Well, I'll wait for them, but in fact, yes, here they are.
Hi, my name is Chris Burgess. I'm a director of biologic operation with Hoover Pharma, and I've been in Lincoln since 2008. So, and we are actually located at 520 Western Doswell Lake Drive in town, so.
Well, glad that you're here and glad you'll have other colleagues with you in, in town. So the other facility that was under consideration, Mr. Landis indicated it was North Carolina?
Yes, in Laurinburg, North Carolina. We actually own lands over there, and we were, you know, planning on building actually in Laurinburg, and then we were, wait a minute, maybe Lincoln would be a good, you know, opportunity. So we're actually glad to be here.
And, and we're glad that you're here. And I, I happen to go to college in Laurinburg, North Carolina.
Great.
And hadn't been back until last year about this time for many years, and, and Lincoln's a whole lot better place.
Yeah.
So congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
All right, other questions? Larry?
Dave, so with the qualification for a TIF, there was a statement in the report that existing site conditions represent a barrier to development without the assistance of tax increment financing. Can you help us understand what the barriers are?
The south side of the, of the property is in a flood plain. So in that sense, it's, it's language, I think, that you've pointed out to us before, but there are, there is the physical barrier of the problems that the site has. And it is in, in an area of either deteriorated or dilapidated circumstances sufficient to give a rise to a finding of blighted substandard. The study was done more than 10 years ago now on Westo. Those conditions have had some alteration. We just recently did a redevelopment agreement with Nature's Variety, but we're hoping for more activity on Westo.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, members of the council, my name is Tom Houston. My address is 233 South 13th, Suite 1900 here in Lincoln, appearing before you today on behalf of Hoover Pharma. You've met Chris Burgess. Also, I wanted to mention Doug Rasmussen from the site selection firm of Dolphin Phelps has been instrumental in this process. As you heard, that Hoover Pharma is a global pharmaceutical entity headquartered in Sofia, Bulgaria, with its U.S. operations headquartered in Peachtree City, Georgia, which is probably getting about 10-foot rain today. Consequently, we do not have a Federal Express coming in with a signed redevelopment agreement, but hopefully we'll get that remedied sometime this week. Hoover Pharma does focus its business opportunities in developing and the manufacture and marketing human and animal health products. It does have an operation here in Lincoln, as indicated by Chris, in the Westgate area, and it's really the production facility. From what I understand, they're really looking for a United States operations for its research and development facility, and thus focused on both Laurinburg and, and Lincoln. And I agree with Councilmember Eskridge that Lincoln is the better choice, but I can tell you that it was instrumental for this site being selected in Lincoln for the use of tax increment financing, and that's what's in front of you today, is the amendment to the plan for that, to facilitate that process. As Director Landis indicated, the Westo redevelopment area was declared blighted and substandard in August of 2005, and a redevelopment plan was adopted for that, for that area. The site directly west of the county jail is approximately eight and a half acre parcel that will be subdivided to accommodate not only this first phase, but hopefully subsequent phases of expansion for the project. This phase was, Phase 1 project, as indicated, is approximately 25,000 to 30,000 square feet. Based upon our calculations, we think the project will support approximately $500,000 in tax increment financing, and we do have a redevelopment agreement concluded that's being signed, and it's on your agenda for approval next week, which timing is important for this property because the contract requires closing prior to the end of the month. And for the developer to move forward, they want to get closed at the end of this month and then start construction this fall to move forward with this R&amp;D facility. Big win for Lincoln, and will be a great member of the Lincoln community. They'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next I'll call item 20, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Lincoln affirming the city's commitment to safeguard the civil rights, safety, and dignity of all community members and our commitment to a diverse, supportive, inclusive, and protective community.
Good afternoon, Jeffrey Patrick, Lincoln City Attorney. This resolution that comes before you is, is not in the ordinary course of events. It's not punitive in nature. It's not a resolution having to do with development.
Over there.
It is an aspirational resolution. And when you think about the reason why it's come before this body, and you think about who could have passed a resolution like this, the Lincoln Chamber of Commerce, for example, could have passed a resolution representing the business community in the City of Lincoln. You could have had a, or Association of Ministers passing a resolution representing various religious communities within the city. I would suggest that the city council's in a unique position to pass this resolution to represent the entire community of Lincoln, and so that's why it's before you this, this afternoon.
Okay. I have asked Carl to read the resolution in its entirety.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Roy, prepare for a lot of whereas language, okay? All right. Whereas the City of Lincoln is made up of individuals who, whose collective cultures, religions, backgrounds, orientations, abilities, and viewpoints, join to form a healthy community that prides itself on being a place that welcomes people and families of all walks of life. And whereas there exists significant and growing concern in our community based upon recent national and regional incidents of white nationalism, hate crimes, discrimination, sexual harassment and assault, and fear of a trend toward more of these crimes in the future. And whereas Lincolnites value all members of our community of all religions, ancestries, and ethnicities, as well as people of any socioeconomic status, disability, gender, sexual orientation, or gender identity. And whereas many Lincolnites recently have gathered peacefully to communicate their rejection of bigotry and affirm their commitment to a diverse, supportive, inclusive, and protective community. And whereas the city wants to reassure its residents and visitors that Lincoln is a place that celebrates diversity and inclusion. And whereas the city will not tolerate any prejudice, racism- And whereas the city will not tolerate any prejudice, racism, bigotry, hatred, bullying or violence toward any groups within our community. And whereas the city has been well-served by professional police department with a history of protecting and respecting the rights of all people while working diligently to keep Lincoln safe. Last one. And whereas the city encourages all residents and visitors in Lincoln to celebrate each other's differences and learn from one another. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Lincoln has takes this opportunity to reinforce our commitment to a diverse, supportive, inclusive and protective community and resolves as follows. The Lincoln City Council calls upon all city departments and employees and all who live, work or visit in Lincoln to speak out against acts of bullying, discrimination and hate violence, and to stand up for those who are targeted for such acts. The Lincoln City Council will lead by example in promoting safety, security and respect for human and constitutional rights and welcomes opportunities to partner with the legislature, other jurisdictions, local organizations, educational institutions, residents and businesses that support and defend all individuals in Lincoln. Section three, the city of Lincoln recognizes values and will proactively work to promote diversity and inclusion within our community. And section four, the city will oppose any attempts to undermine the safety, security and rights of members of our community. And finally, section five, the city does not tolerate discrimination, harassment or any hate-based crimes and hereby rejects prejudice and bigotry in all forms. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? If you'd like to testify, just step right up, sign in.
We had the sign-in sheet.
Please go ahead and call them.
So the first one would be Nikki Archer, then Jamie Henning and Dan Cleve.
Thank you. My name is Nikki Archer. My address is nine six zero one Yellow Pine Road here in Lincoln. And I'm here representing Lincoln's Young Professional Group. We're a group of about fourteen hundred young professionals that live and work in the Lincoln area. And I'm here today in support of the resolution. YPG wants Lincoln to be an attractive place in which young professionals take ownership of its future by engaging the community professionally, personally and philanthropically. Our organization believes that diverse environment is critical for young professionals. Beyond that, the cornerstone of this community itself is based on the experiences, cultures and beliefs of our citizens. Now is a perfect time to take a stand against hatred, bigotry and violence and to remind our residents that Lincoln is a place that celebrates and embraces our differences. We are committed to continuing to strengthen the city of Lincoln through creating an inclusive, supportive and productive environment for all. And this resolution is an important part of that. I also have a letter of support I'd like to submit. Thank you. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
The next testifier, please.
Jamie Henning.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. I'm Jamie Henning and I'm here today representing our president, Wendy Birdsall, the Lincoln Chamber of Commerce and our seventeen hundred plus business members in the business community. This week, we visited about this topic in our chamber coffee and we are here today to support this anti-hate resolution. We believe this is an important proactive step for our city. We're a strong and growing city because of the values we hold dear. We're inclusive and we're diverse and we celebrate different cultures in our city. And this is the energy that drives our community forward. We're all committed to being welcoming city that's an inclusive environment and we feel this plays an important role. Thank you so much for putting this forward. I also have a letter in support.
Questions for Jamie?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next testifier?
Good afternoon. My name is Dan Cleve. And if I'd like to ask permission, I actually have received hundreds of death threats in the last month. So I gave you guys my address. So I would, I'd prefer not to announce it.
You've written it down?
I've written it down for you guys, yeah. So I trust you guys. So this has got to be the best Bill Clinton speech I've heard in a long time. You know, and you know, I read the editorial on the, on your newspaper here and it like tried to play this or portray it as some sort of American sentiment. And you know, I wanted to come here and ask, you know, you guys, is this an American sentiment or is this a business proposition? That's an important thing because when I look at American, it's history. So as a very long and rich history, great history. I look at people like Thomas Jefferson, George Washington, Ben Franklin with a sense of admiration, right? And you know, they did a lot of things when we made this country that are not politically correct, that many today would be considered hateful or bigoted or close-minded. And you know, I wanted to review some of these things. I'm sure most of you guys learned them in college. But I think it would be, serve a good purpose to just run through them real quick, guys. You know, one, we had a war against Indians, the Native Americans. We kicked them out and because we were better at running a society than they were. It was a, it was a, like the free market is used to essentially kick out people who aren't good at business and management. Well, we had a war to determine who was better at running a nation's natural resources and economy and, you know, cultural values. And we won. You know, we also had a war against Mexicans to secure Texas and California. We fought against Muslim pirates. We did, you know, we did lots of different things. We, you know, to be fair, there were classes of people that were not allowed to have property and were not allowed to vote. We, like, we're a democracy now, but once upon a time, we were a republic. Where if you were not a businessman or some sort of, you know, high, you know, high merit-based individual, you were not allowed to vote. And it worked a lot better, to be fair. And you know, so the thing is, you know, another thing is like homosexuals were not allowed to promote it in fifth, sixth grade classrooms. You know, and if you say something about these things, it's considered hate. One specific ideology that was targeted was white nationalism. You know, which, to be fair, all of our founding fathers were that title. And you know, it's specifically targeted for them. And you know, to be fair, there's lots of other groups that have this ethnocentric, you know, idea and we don't attack them. And there's a reason for that. I think it's, to be fair, this is very hateful towards that group of people, you know? And so in closing, you know, you look at all these, this language of tolerance and diversity and community and whatnot. You know, and you're, it's, I think it's very coincidental that you're tying this in with business propositions today because that's what it is. This is, this is, you know, friendly. This is filtered content to like create a safe zone where you can do business. Because that is the goal in the next fifty years is to create this giant hegemony of essentially elite, elite business managers and corporations that control this like classless, identityless, raceless, mass population of consumers. And that's what's happening. It's already happening in Europe. And so I think it's interesting. It's an interesting question. Is this, this Bill Clinton speech here, this Resolution seventeen R two two six, is this an American sentiment or is it really just a business proposition? Thank you.
Questions? Thank you. Next testifier, please.
Next is Albert Sukow, Lou Brodts and Dan Reisdorf.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Albert Sukow. My address is nine one zero zero Maryvale Drive. I'm a recent immigrant myself to Lincoln. So I know nobody here will hold that against me. I am here to oppose Resolution seventeen R dash two two six to, to speak against hate speech. And I want to tell you my reasons. I watched, I watched a lot of the coverage after the event and I saw a picture of angry faces. And that was the face that was put on the event. But I also spent a significant amount of time watching the livestream, numerous livestreams of the event. And I was very interested in what I saw because there were several things that stood out to me as entirely unique. One of them is that when the police arrived to address the Charlottesville protesters themselves, the Charlottesville protesters began shouting, "Blue Lives Matter." And that stood out to me because it is not something that we see very often at these kinds of protests. It doesn't really reflect a hateful, bigoted or supremacist mindset. These were the police that were there to terminate their permit to continue protesting. So that was very interesting. This was not the typical group that you see protesting. What I also saw from those livestreams was a man who was attacked and acid was sprayed in his face and he almost lost his eyesight while he was doing nothing violent to anybody. I saw pictures of a makeshift flamethrower used against these protesters. They weren't broadcast very widely, but certainly if you search for pictures of the Charlottesville protests, you will see them. I saw men with clubs surrounding a now infamous Dodge Charger just before an unfortunate and deadly event. After, after the protest, I saw these young men who were there trying to express their concerns. They were what we call doxed on the internet. Their identities were revealed. And then their employers were called by parties unknown. And these people were fired from their jobs. Their livelihoods were terminated. They had gone to the event in good faith. They were showing their faces. They were wearing college shirts, almost making themselves easy to find. And this is the result they got. They got disowned by their families. They got fired from their jobs in many cases. And so when I saw in the Lincoln Journal Star a proposal or a resolution to stand against hate, hate speech, to stand against violence, I thought these people had a lot of hate directed toward them. They had a lot of violence directed toward them. I thought, oh, that's great. And then when I looked at the resolution itself, I saw lines four through six. And on line five, I saw white nationalism called out, which many people associate in their own minds with white supremacism. But I was glad to see that word wasn't used because it's even more loaded than, than white nationalism. So I appreciated the resolution as if it is objectively carried out, it would help defend these young men from attack. But I don't think in the end that was the intent of it. So if you disagree with these young men and their concerns, why do we shut them down? Why do we prevent them from speaking? And this resolution doesn't do that, I understand that. But why would we not even hear what they have to say? Because if they're wrong, the classic libertarian argument goes, then it should be easy to demonstrate that they're wrong. Let them speak. Let them show how wrong they are so that we can then, through reason and through dialogue, demonstrate exactly how wrong they are.
One minute.
So ladies and gentlemen, I oppose this resolution. I think that the sentiments that were expressed by the young men are common and that they were articulated even by our last duly-elected president, Donald Trump. And the defacement of the statues that occurred after they were finished was not their responsibility. Those young men didn't do it. They were done by their opponents. If anyone, I would support an amendment condemning the opponents of the Charlottesville protesters. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you. Next testifier?
All right. Next is Caitlin Mullin and Terry Pope Gonzalez.
Oh, that's after Lou, correct?
I'm hoping so. You know, a couple of months ago, I figured I was going to have a different view of here, but that's all right. Good afternoon and thank you for the privilege, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here in support of this resolution. I've heard two dissenting opinions at the beginning. And I would just like to start with a quote from Abraham Lincoln. It says, "I am a slow walker, but I never walk back." This country and its walk forward for progress is slow, but it never walks back. This city and its growth from thirty people to the two hundred and fifty thousand plus has been slow, but it will not, I repeat, not walk back. I stand here aghast, but also remembering from one of my tutors that change only happens when everyone is made to feel uncomfortable, that when you work for the change, you yourself must feel uncomfortable. And quite frankly, I am feeling uncomfortable right now because the matter at hand and the resolution that we're looking at and hopefully is planned to be passed is in some parts because of two gentlemen. One, who I could sit here and put on a screen was at Charlottesville, who was part of the violence, but chose not to bring that up as he spoke, as his cohort spoke about how he saw it on livestream. Are you going to say that you haven't passed back the stories over a couple beers? So.
Excuse me, Lou.
What I would ask is that we go forward. What I would go forward and say is that we only spoke to business owners voting, once again, going back. And at that point, it was a better way, as expressed by the first gentleman. But he goes further to say that this is a business decision. And a business decision is not the best way to handle our politics. I wonder if he got confused. I also wonder, as he listed the Civil Wars, that he forgot too. The Civil War, where brothers did fight over these ideas and many other, many other things. We could get into the history lesson on that. And World War Two. World War Two, where my grandfather on both sides fought. And I know many of you have family members that fought as well. In other words, this particular idea has been debated. This particular idea has been fought over and this particular idea worldwide lost. These are gentlemen and children and young men that, yes, have lost their way and yes, are pained and angry because they cannot figure out how to get a better opportunity for themselves. That is true. But not, not only speak and write words against this type of rhetoric would be us replaying history. We can not only speak and write words, but I, along with many others, will continue to take action to make sure that this city, where many of our children are being raised, is not also a city where racism, homophobia, bigotry or Islamophobia is raised as well. I urge you all to stand in support of this resolution and in every time that you're requested, because you are public servants by the people you are supposed to represent, to stand in the streets as well and say that this is not welcome in our hometown. Thank you very much for the time, the privilege and the opportunity. Once again, my name is Lou Brodts. My address, because I do not fear it, is five zero two zero South Fifty-Sixth Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, six eight five one six. I'm a proud homeowner, a proud Nebraskan and a proud father and I'm proud to stand here and say this. Thank you again.
Questions? Thank you. Next testifier?
Next is Dan Reisdorf, Sony Fan and Caitlin Mullin.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Mullin and I'm a student at the University of Nebraska-Lincoln. And I wrote my address down, but I would like to not say it. That's okay. So I would like to start with racism has no place in our community. And I appreciate the goodwill of the city council in this resolution. With that being said, I have some concerns of the unintended consequences this resolution might have. Questions, like how is this going to be implemented? And how are we going to define hate? I'm sure some of you have heard about my story of what happened a couple of weeks ago at the University of Nebraska-Lincoln when I was out advocating for free markets and freedom, handing out stickers that said, "I love America," when I was confronted by city employees, because they're employed by the university, calling me racist, anti-fascist, a member of the KKK, a white nationalist, when I have no connection to that and I have, I believe those should be condemned. Due to my traumatic experience on campus, I worry that I'm going to fall victim to the resolution. And based upon one person's definition of race and hate, am I going to have to fear that the police are going to come to my door for standing, for me standing up for freedom? We cannot have the community define what hate means. I'm asking you guys to vote no on this because we are standing up for civil rights and part of civil rights is freedom of speech. And we need to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Questions for Caitlin? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Dan Reisdorf here?
Hey.
All right, if not, Sony Fan.
Hello, council and everyone that is attending today's meeting.
I thought I was gonna just have something typed up or prepared, but I'm actually just gonna speak from my heart. There's a lot of events that is going on here in this world, this country. Some that have had happened in the past, some that's also occurring now. But in all, we are human and we all bleed red. And humanity is what we have in common. There's good and bad in all sorts of life, in all sorts of people. But we have to remember that the important thing that keeps us going is the belief and the love that we have for ourselves and for each other. Whether or not if this person loves me or hates me, or this person is indifferent with me or not, the point of it is, is that we're all human. And people are afraid to mention their addresses, people are getting death threats and it doesn't matter who's getting them or what, it just shouldn't happen. My parents didn't have a choice really to come here. If they had a choice, they would have stayed where they were at. But due to the circumstances of what's going on back then, they had to come. And the US opened their arms. And ironically, the Midwest at that time, back in the sixties, was a real big hub for refugees. Did they have a choice to leave? Yes. Why? 'Cause they didn't wanna die. They wanted to survive. And this was the choice for them that they made and they came here and they opened their arms. They did what they were supposed to do, they became citizens in nineteen eighty-two, in eighty-three, my parents came in nineteen eighty. I was born three months after they arrived. I'm a citizen, but I still value humanity and I still value rights, I still value freedom. And I teach this to my friends, my kids, even people that are wrong. But they're, they have a right to their beliefs and you can't take that from them. They have a right to their feelings, 'cause feelings are real. Doesn't matter. But all we need to do is really just respect one another and just care. I have one thing I do wanna read and it's from, uh, Ellie Bezel. And he read The Perils of Indifference back in nineteen ninety-nine. Indifference elicits no response and indifference is not a response. Indifference is not a beginning, it is an end. And therefore indifference is always the friend of the enemy, for it benefits the aggressor, never the victim, whose pain is magnified when he or she feels forgotten. The political prisoner in his cell, the hungry children, the homeless refugees, not to respond to their flight, not to relieve their solitude for offering them a spark of hope to, is to exile them from human memory. And in denying their humanity, we betray our own. So all this going back and forth. I understand, I can relate, but I may, I may not know a hundred percent. But I do know that we are all human. That's all I have.
Thank you. Questions?
Terry?
That's okay. Hit it. All right. Here's my filter. That's the best I got. Teresa, now. I get my, my piece disturbed every time you guys get, uh, paid holiday and my husband doesn't. Now this is for, um, Roy, he had a birthday. Now the little kids like noise. Okay? Now, I'm a dog person, am I not, Roy? And the boy that I have? Were you afraid of him, Roy?
Concerned.
Okay. Al Capone has no problem taking any of you. He's two hundred and sixty-five pounds of English Mastiff. He could care less what kinda shirt you have on, what color your skin is. He knows that he has been raised by me and abused by you. You know, the most abuse that I have put up with, oh, here, we brought you some can of man, all right? This is from that Marine sniper, my brother. It's Popeye spinach. Now I'm gonna read this, okay? This is Journal Star Monday, September twenty-fourth, twenty-twelve. Utah escapees are arrested in Lincoln. Of course, white lives don't matter, they never did, not in Lincoln, Nebraska. A sheriff's deputy out for morning coffee Sunday stumbled upon a perfect plot for a buddy film. I'm an inner-city kid, Denver, Colorado, so I have to spell when I can't say it. Lancaster County Sheriff's Deputy Terry Jones was crossing the Harris Overpass on his way to McDonald's shortly before nine AM. You guys know where the Harris Overpass is? Four blocks from my house, right? Now I have a tumor. If you guys had left me alone, let me get some sleep, I'd have died in my own bed, huh? Now Carl, you, Raybolt, Christensen, I like you, so we're gonna leave you alone. Bernie, you weren't in on it. Gaylor Baird, remember the tornado? Remember the tornado and you were afraid of the balls or the hail coming down on the woods bubbles? Do you know the discrimination that you showed that day? You couldn't even go to the same bathroom with us people out here. Do you really think a tornado is gonna care what business you own? Or if you're Deputy Almsman for the State of Nebraska? Now that man back there, he probably couldn't hear like I can't hear. So hopefully I'm not as loud as him. I was thinking, wow, hm, but I can't hear. You know, we have a hearing man here. First time I yelled at you, you should have been at my house, huh? But see, actually Roy's got it. When the person came about their car in impound, you're right, if he had a Tesla, he'd have had a better attorney. Now Tesla to me is a band and I saw it at Red Rocks with my son, who I haven't seen since two thousand and six. And guess what? He's an Aryan Brotherhood. And if any of you bother him, trust me, you don't want me at your door. Now my address is three forty-nine South First Street. Please come on over and please be offended, because you can't possibly be as offended as I am. Now when your Black Lives Matter march happened, where was I? Sitting with a little boy who's called White Chocolate, because his mama's white and his daddy's black. Now what people don't understand, because they don't know their history, at one time, ten Irishmen were worth one black slave. So what is an Irish? Hunky white, right? But guess what? They get their own holiday, don't they? How come? Because everybody's Irish on St. Patrick's Day, right? For business. So yeah, here, let's finish. This town makes convicts, that's what they do. They make convicts faster than any place I've ever seen and beggar factories. My husband works up off at Air Force Base where none of you can go. He has no idea what an EBT card is or food stamps or even welfare cheese. And he's sixty-five years old. What do you think of that? Carl, you ever met my husband? Yeah, 'cause you tried to say he disturbed your peace. He doesn't disturb anybody's peace, he lives with me. He wouldn't say shit if he had a mouthful. It's the only cuss word I'm gonna use. And shit actually means stack high in transit. Because if you don't stack it right, guess what, that load falls on you and we gotta call a boycott. Can you imagine having the power to call a boycott on a store or somebody's business? Gaylor Baird, you're only in my neighborhood twenty minutes and you were so sure that business was so good. Do you know how we know? Because when you step into my neighborhood, we start writing down license plates. Because if you're a child molester, we're gonna come to you. Because we can't call the police, because they don't show up. Eight hours later, maybe they do. What do you think of that? That's all, no, not, that's probably not all I've got to say, but right now, can you hand that to? And you know what, here, do we need to keep this out? You know what this is? Camel filters. Who smokes here? Do I? No. Please hand him that. I would. No, make sure, because you didn't give Mickey her panties. All right.
Okay, next testifier.
That's it on the list. Anybody else wish to come forward?
Very good. If you wanna come forward, please come forward now.
Apologies, um, my name is Erica Hanson, I prefer not to give my address. Um, I did not.
Could you sign in with the list there then?
Sorry. My name is Erica Hanson, um, this is my first city council meeting, I did not plan to speak at all. Um, I just planned to watch and see what went on. Um, so I am very nervous right now and shaking, um, but I've felt that I had to get over my own nervousness and get up and say, well, this is the first time I've heard, um, the full form of this resolution, um, I am in favor of it. Um, anything that speaks of any sort of white nationalism, um, personally, uh, I am not a fan of. Um, I may have some sort of history that comes from this country or this country or whatever. Um, but I do not believe in any sort of, um, white pride, um, and that scares me, hearing things like that. Um, I believe, um, that it is important for our city to take a stand for the civil rights of all people in our city and to show respect for everyone in our city. Um, and I am fearful that, um, hate speech tends to lead to hate violence. It is very true that all sides in any matter, there can always be violent people on any side of anything. But hate speech is, um, something that I think is more likely to lead to violence. Um, and that is something that I personally, as your average standard just citizen voter, do not respect. And, um, I would be very proud of this city to take a stand, to stand up for all its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good, next item.
That concludes our public hearing, we can move into the voting session. Public hearing resolutions, item fifteen. Approving Legends as Aquino Satellite at eight oh one R Street, this was introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Benny, seconded by Carl. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Raybolt?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Item sixteen is approving Gray's Cakes Saloon as Aquino Satellite at one oh four North Twentieth Street, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Benny, seconded by Carl. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Raybolt?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Item seventeen is approving halftime barn grill as Aquino Satellite at two hundred West P Street, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Benny, seconded by Carl. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Raybolt?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Item eighteen is Use Permit Zero Five Zero Zero Four A, this is the application of large partnership to alter the existing layout at South Fourteenth and Yankee Hill, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Benny, seconded by Carl. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Raybolt?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Item nineteen is Comp Plan Conformance One Seven Zero One Two, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Benny, seconded by Carl. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Raybolt?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Item twenty is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Lincoln affirming the city's commitment to safeguard the civil rights, safety and dignity of all community members and our commitment to a diverse, supportive, inclusive and protective community, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Benny. Discussion. Carl, would you like to lead off?
I would, thank you. Um, and I wanna thank everybody, uh, who was here and who participated in this hearing today. Um, everybody's spoken up for values that are important to you. Hearing, uh, from you is important, there's always an open forum, obviously. And perhaps more importantly, I wanna thank those who were in opposition, unfortunately, some of them have, have left. Um, because that's who we are. I mean, we're a community that listens, we, we, we respect one another's ability to, to speak your mind, to say what's important to you. And that's important to us. We might disagree, we disagree up here from time to time. We do. But we respect one another and each other's rights to, to speak out. So this summer's incidents in Charlottesville, Virginia were deeply disturbing to that community. And those shockwaves rippled out into other communities and they rippled down into really the, the core of our nation. And these were issues that we've been dealing with since we were founded as a nation that we, we still haven't completely gotten our, our arms around. Charlottesville, Virginia is a great city. It's, it's a city that has a top-notch university, it's the home of the third president of the United States, the drafter of our Declaration of Independence. But that great city and its proud and shiny image was seriously damaged and tarnished because of one lousy weekend. And the people of Charlottesville will have to live with that heritage for the rest of their lives. But that's Charlottesville. What we're dealing with here is Lincoln, Nebraska. And as one of the testifiers mentioned, when Lincoln was established as our state's capital city, we were a hamlet of thirty citizens. We were made the capital city. We had to build a state capital, we had to build a university, we had to build a prison, an insane asylum, a city. We had to build roads and businesses and houses with thirty people, how do you do that? Well, you don't. Except you, you open the doors, you let it be known that you're a city, that you're open for business, that you're needing to form and that anybody and everybody who has skills can come into that city and help build that community. And so that, that foundation of our city since we became the state capital was to have those open arms, to be respectful of one another, whoever would come to help us build this great place. Twenty-three years after we were named the state capital, those thirty people in the eighteen ninety census, those thirty people became fifty-five thousand people. That many people came to this, this backwater that was, there was nothing here. But they came because of the promise of a life, of a great life that was offered. And they came and, and built this community with the strong pillars of government and business and education and philanthropy and faith. Lincoln would become the great city that I think the founders envisioned. Sometimes it's talked, there's an image that comes out of the Sermon on the Mount, getting a preacher here. The city on a hill. And that same image has been one that has been taken over by, by preachers, but by politicians and notably some presidents. Presidents have referred to that image frequently and the one president I think who referred to it most often might surprise you, was Ronald Reagan. And when he left office, President Reagan said these words. He was talking about the city on the hill. And he said, "If that city had to have walls, then those walls would have to have doors. And if it had doors, those doors would be open to anyone with the will and the heart to get there. That's how I saw it and that's how I see it still," President Reagan said. So if we, together, if we are to be that city, then we must live up to that legacy. We must welcome those who come and help us build this city to be an even greater city. We must continue to be that, that refugee resettlement community that we've been for decades. People will come. Sure, they'll be different, but we must welcome them as all of us have come here from different places and been welcomed to. Lastly, this resolution, more than anything, holds each one of us. Not just us up here, not just those that are here at council meeting today, but everybody in this community. Holds each one of us account, accountable. This resolution reads city. And city is not, uh, city is not what happens in this building, city is everybody. City includes everybody in this, in this community, its council, its city staff, its businesses, its community. Its council, its city staff, its businesses, its community leaders, its our schools and our churches and other religious groups, its families, it's every single individual. Together, we are that city on the hill. And as the city, we have to take that stand. We have to take that stand and that pledge that we cannot tolerate hate. We cannot tolerate haste, hate-based crimes in our city. Because we're better than that. Thank you.
It's tough going after the Reverend. Thank you, Carl, though. Thank you for bringing this to council, uh, for your leadership and for the entire council for getting behind this and to all of the people who spoke today, for the concern you have for the future of our community. This resolution is largely symbolic, but it's important. And it's about shaping the future of our community. It's about what we value and hold dear. And I think that really what we wanna do is, is affirm that none of us are powerless in the face of hate and bullying and discrimination. There are things that we can do peaceably and respectfully. We can decide not to be silent in the face of injustice. And we can report hate crimes and violence and acts of intimidation and discrimination where we see them. And we can call upon our law enforcement professionals. They wanna support us in fighting those things. And we can engage in respectful dialogue to build understanding, uh, among people with different views. That's really important. And we can raise our children to respect diversity. And that's really how we shape the future. Our resolution encourages all of this and I'm proud to support the values of tolerance and inclusion that it embodies. Thank you.
Jane?
Well, I too wanna stand and, or sit before you in solidarity, solidarity with my colleagues on the city council, the members of our community, and everyone in our city. We're very proud of who we've become as a city. And this resolution reaffirms our commitment to everyone's civil rights and the dignity of all and to safeguard those individuals in our community and to allow them to express themselves in a very civil fashion, which I was so proud to see everyone do so today. There are so many people I wanna commend who have demonstrated true leadership in, in our community. Certainly all of you in the community, our Chamber of Commerce. And I know the Young Professional Group has been outspoken time and time again before the state legislature, saying how important this is to our community, that we protect individuals and safeguard everyone's civil rights and do so on a daily basis. It's something that we can never forget and that we are terribly proud of. You know, I often quote all the great accolades that our city of Lincoln has received. And it's not just the business side of it, although that's very important to us. That clearly has helped us to grow. But it's also how we raise our families and how we welcome diversity. We have been a refugee relocation hub for decades. And it's something that has increased the diversity of our community and has made us very proud. But some of the accolades that we have received are attributed to everyone in the community by being welcoming. We are rated number four of the best places to raise a family. Best places for women, best places for men, one of the happiest states. It's a great city for our college grads. Top twenty, or it's top five in the top twenty states for education climate. Something that we're very, very proud of. We also have one of the best work-life balances, a great quality of community. And these are things that we're very proud of. But we didn't just get there. We got there from the contributions of so many in our community and the public-private partnerships. And that's why Lincoln is such a great place to live. That's why we keep winning some of these amazing business contracts and welcoming these global leaders to our community. They've recognized it too. And we are here proudly today to stand in solidarity, to support this resolution and to reaffirm to everyone that we will do our best every single day to uphold the traditions of our city, but also the spirit of this resolution and work with everyone to make sure that we can execute it on it.
Thank you. Benny?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. Uh, I'd like to stand in solidarity with my colleagues. They've said lots of wonderful things and I'm not gonna reiterate that. I'm gonna say a little something about me. I grew up in Kentucky. I grew up in the south and I moved to Nebraska not knowing what Nebraska was like and found it to be a warm, inviting, and welcoming place. I call it my home now. I'm a Nebraskan by choice because of many of the things my colleagues have said. Nebraska's not perfect yet, but we're working hard to get there. And that's what this resolution says. We're gonna reaffirm our commitment to working to make Nebraska one of the best places in the world for anyone. And I vote yes for this resolution.
Thank you. As the Chair of the Council, it's my privilege to speak last before I call the vote. And I have heard in the days since, uh, Carl and I first discussed this resolution, uh, some concerns on both sides of the issue. Concerns that we were trying to limit free speech, concerns that we were making a gesture that is meaningless and, uh, useless on its face. Um, I'd like to speak to that for a moment and what we expect to receive as a community as a result from this, uh, resolution. First of all, this is not a resolution against free speech, quite the opposite. It is my belief that free speech cannot take place when someone speaks out there and tells us their mind and they are then the recipient of anger and hate. Uh, we need to separate anger, uh, from public discourse. That's one of the intentions of this resolution. Because anger produces hate and hate produces violence. And we do not want that in our city. We all have passions. I hope we do. Because nothing great has ever been achieved without passion. But on the other hand, when we allow our passions to rule us, we achieve nothing great either. As a city, I hope the result of this resolution is that we will have a discourse, a civil, polite discourse in our community on the subject. And that we will, through that discussion, in our families, in our neighborhoods, uh, produce a result where we all can look at each other with acceptance and understanding. And when we disagree, we can agree to be disagree, disagree without being disagreeable. And we have done that as a city council. Uh, I'm pleased to sit with these folks because we have disagreed, as Carl said. But no one's ever been disagreeable towards me and any of that. And I've, hopefully I've never expressed it to anyone else. And that's what we wanted in our entire community. These folks up here represent our community and have done a good job at having good free speech, good discourse, and avoiding anger and hatred. And that's what we want for our entire community. Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. There are no public hearing ordinances, second reading. There are no ordinances, third reading. Our resolutions on first reading are items twenty-one through thirty-one. And our ordinances on first reading were items thirty-two through forty-three. Our pending list dates certain are items forty-four and forty-five. Item forty-four will come off for next week. Pending list are items forty-six through forty-eight. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda and not plan to appear on a future agenda may do so at this time. Since it is an open microphone night. Okay.
Okay. You giving me a cannon man? Terry Pope Gonzalez. And I want you to know that not one of you represent my neighborhood. Not one of you. Even though Carl let you. Carl, you're not the one who threw us under the bus. Jonathan Cook did. Remember Jonathan Cook? Uh, see, there should've never been a concrete company in a residential area. Never. But hey, here, we're not gonna talk about that today. We're gonna talk about this. How you doing, Jeff? You're safe today. Alright, we're gonna, we're gonna read this, okay? Cuz I got little kids. And the little kids are what? Two, three, and four. So they're paying attention. Lincoln Journal Star Local, Monday, September twenty-fourth, twenty-twelve. Utah Escapies are arrested in Lincoln. Lincoln, Nebraska. Can you imagine that? By Zack and I don't know how to say his name, P-L-U-H-A-C-E-K. Lincoln Journal Star. A sheriff's deputy out for his morning coffee Sunday stumbled upon a perfect plot for a buddy film or a Jack K-E-R-O-U-A-C style novel. Lancaster County's Sheriff's Deputy Terry Jones was crossing the Harris Overpass on his way to McDonald's shortly before nine AM when he saw an abandoned Buick on the side of the bridge and two men walking away from it. Jones called to them, but they wouldn't stop. So a swarm of lawmen closed off the bridge, cutting them off. Back at sheriff's headquarters, investigators heard quite a tale. The older man, thirty-one-year-old Dallas E. Derrick, and he's white, honky white, told them that he and Jason, Jason M. Braum, like Brahma Bull, twenty-one, had called, crawled through a one-by-two-foot vent in a laundry room in the county jail in northeastern Utah on Wednesday. Then spent the days following their escape stealing cars along Interstate eighty and driving until they ran out of gas, according to Lancaster County Sheriff's Sergeant Mike N-O-V-A-C-E-K, before coming to a close in the Lancaster County Jail. Their journey took them from Vernal, Utah, BYU, right? To Cheyenne, Wyoming, where they stole a Cadillac Escalade with keys inside along with a full tank of gas, five tall beers. Then to Nebraska, where they stopped in Maxwell and Grand Island before coming to the capital city. Their fourth car, a Chevrolet Tahoe, Chevrolet Tahoe, they picked up in Grand Island, ran out of gas near mile marker three ninety-nine in northwest Lincoln. The Nebraska State Patrol spotted the SUV while doing traffic duty for Saturday's Husker football game and had it towed. The pair hoofed it more than, it's a C. Escapies, page two. Hoofed it four miles to North Twenty-seventh Street, Derrick told investigators. There they stolen early nineteen nineties blue Buick from an apartment complex near North Star High School. Can you imagine that? Huh. And then they end up over by me. Now in twenty-twelve, Al Capone was only two, right? Now Carl, do you know why I'm so upset with you? You let those people kill my dog and you did nothing. See, where I come from, you don't abuse the old people and you don't molest the young people. Oh, Gaylor Baird, did you know? You're my son's age, just so you understand, okay? And I've been to the Mormon temple where he, I don't, I don't know. We never got to that. Cuz my brother laid the tile in the big temple in Utah. Now I ha, and I'm very jealous of this man. Do you know what it cost me to get a tan like that? So you know what? I don't have a problem with somebody's color of their skin. You know what I have a problem with? It's the money somebody made off our suffering. Now you understand, my husband is back to work now and he better be left alone. And I haven't seen my son since two thousand and six. And I'm sure I'm the only one that's ever been to a Black Lives Matter march and a KKK meeting. And I'm sure I'm not one of the leaders in this town. Because I would've never let it go to hell in a handbasket like you people did. Now which of you people up there make six hundred dollars a month? Not any of you. But those little old ladies in my neighborhood do. And they don't have EBT cards and they don't go to the beggar factories. And when I have to stand in line at Food Net to get your throwaway groceries, that really upsets me. Because their husbands were in World War One and World War Two and the Korean conflict. And they're living on six hundred dollars a month. Because our leaders just need to have some money, don't they? So when somebody says, you know, she's really pissed off, that's POW. Now let's get it straight. My dad was Army, Air Corps, Corps of Engineers, Ordnance Division, explosives expert, POW. So I think I have a right to be pissed off. I guess it better be being pissed on, right? That's what Al Capone was doing to Roy's sign so I couldn't give him back to him. But you know what? So when somebody says she's angry, come on over.
Thank you.
And I didn't care what you guys voted on it. I, cuz nobody ever asked me, okay? But now here, now everybody's seeing me cry. Now we happy?
Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify this afternoon? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. President, I would move that we adjourn.
Second?
Moved by Carl, seconded by Jane. Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero.